All right, good evening and welcome to the Grafton School Committee June 6th meeting. I will call this meeting to order with a quick congratulations to the class of 2023. We're so proud of you and can't wait to see what all of you do next. So thank you so much for your years of Grafton, you'll be missed. And since this is our official last meeting before the end of the year, I just wanted to say a quick thank you to our teachers and staff and everybody that works within the Grafton schools for a wonderful year. And I hope people have a wonderful summer. We'll probably wrap up at the end of the meeting saying the same. So I'm going to ask if there's any public comments. You can go ahead and approach the table, just introduce yourself, your name and where you live. And she's asked for a few minutes of extra time and I granted it tonight, so we'll let Kristi do her thing.
Hello, my name is Kristi Kilbuzinski and I live on Lottie Drive. Before I start my public comment, I would first like to address Mrs. Gasper. Mrs. Gasper, thank you for all that you've done and all that you've had to endure over the years. While there has been a nasty rumor that a nice mom with endless binders and a hatred for Johnny Tremaine might have been the catalyst for you leaving Grafton, please know that you will deeply be missed and I wish you could take me with you. Now onto my comment. I'm sure no one is more anxious to hear what I have to say this evening than the acting superintendent. This is probably because over the years I have become known as his biggest adversary. Anybody who's ever seen the district's Facebook page, witnessed a school committee meeting, or seen him banging his head against his desk after receiving one of my scathing emails knows that we fundamentally do not get along. It is no surprise that a few months after I first stormed his office seven years ago, that Dr. Cummings decided playing in traffic would be a soothing way to spend his mornings. Now, while I should be using my time here to touch on one of the five million things that I believe Dr. Cummings is doing wrong on a daily basis, I will not, as much as it pains me to say this, as it is Mrs. Gasper's last meeting, I would like to say something commendable about her longtime captor, I mean coworker, and friend. This year, Dr. Cummings and I had the rare opportunity to work together towards a common goal of improving traffic at the high school campus. During this time, I had the pleasure and he had the misfortune of me joining him and Mrs. Gasper occasionally on their traffic duty. For those here who do not know, each morning, Dr. Cummings is the crossing guard at the high school campus. Now, many people may ask why he does it, and I can say it's clear after one morning in the rain and cold that he is not out there for glory or for recognition. In fact, most parents don't even know who it is that they're passing by each morning, and those who do are using him as target practice. So why does he do it? Well, head traumas and control issues aside, I would say it's because he genuinely loves it. Anyone who's ever driven by sees how Dr. Cummings and Mrs. Gasper are almost bionic in the way that they can seamlessly direct the 17 buses, over 300 exiting vehicles, one unpredictable red rocket, and 1,400 students each day. But what you don't see is that each student is greeted by Dr. Cummings even if they don't want to be. In fact, especially if they don't want to be. He can tell you every student's name, which I find extraordinary since I can't even accurately identify my own children as they pass by me in the kitchen each day. And it's not merely that he can identify the students, but he makes each one feel seen as well. From asking if they finally got a girlfriend, admiring fashion choices, or attempting to make a joke, he is there with a personal comment and a smile always. From this half-hour act of kindness each day, he is providing the students with crucial life lessons for which many will not even come to realize for years to come. By being there daily, he is teaching them that showing up matters. Even when it's freezing, hailing, and you'd rather pull the covers up over your head each morning, you still need to show up to get the job done. Working hard and being consistent is a skill of value that he instills on them daily. And he also shows the students that no matter your job title or pay grade, no one is above helping others. Now, I did try endlessly to find a Rocky quote for which could really pull this all together. However, I was unsuccessful. But I was able to find a Grizzly Adams one. And it says, "When you come to think of it, all that a person really has is other folks." And I reckon there are a lot of folks in these parts that could use a helping hand. I hope that the students of Grafton always emulate their Grizzly superintendent and lend a helping hand when they can. It is because of all of this that I am honored on behalf of the state of Massachusetts and the Department of Transportation to present Dr. Cummings with an award for his service. Dr. Cummings, your selflessness, hard work, and consistency has earned you the admiration of being the second-best crossing guard in the state. Now, if I were to guess, I would say it's your lack of whimsy and overall fun-sponge attitude that held you back from the number-one slot. But everyone, especially you, leaves room for improvement.
So, Dr. Cummings.
Oh, boy.
It is with great joy that I present you this award, and I hope that you treasure it because it represents the height of your crossing guard career. As I am sure with most aspects of your work-life, you are sure to have a downward slide next year without Mrs. Gasper there to hold you up. Dr. Cummings, while you may always be an adequate superintendent, you are undeniably a marvelous crossing guard. So here is to many more years of you playing in traffic, and hopefully for you, that little red rocket doesn't perfect its aim anytime soon. Thank you, and congratulations.
Wow. Wow. I'm honored, thank you.
Did you want a picture?
No.
I'm sure Kristi.
This is great, thank you.
All right, well, thank you. Thank you, Kristi, and congratulations, Dr. Cummings, on your well-earned award. We're very proud of you. Next up, we have some fabulous sixth graders from Millbury Street and North Street School who are gonna come up and present about their experience at Nature's Classroom. So I'll ask you all to come up and if you can introduce yourselves to us with your name. You don't have to say your addresses. And we'll be excited to hear what you have to say. Joanne and Mandy, do you need seats?
Nope.
You're good? Oh, wow, you guys are, I love it. All right. We'll start, Drew, we'll start with you.
Hi, my name is Drew Namela and I like Nature's Classroom.
Awesome. Louder?
A little louder.
Speak up, speak into the microphone.
Lean into the microphone.
Yeah, there's only one for the four of you.
Pull it toward yourselves?
Yeah.
Hi, my name is Drew Namela and I like Nature's Classroom.
My name is Charlie and I'm from North Street.
Nice.
Pull it toward you, yeah.
My name's Hayden and I'm from Millbury Street.
Say your name again.
Hayden.
Hayden, nice to meet you.
Pass the mic to your friend there.
My name's Maria Vaz and I go to Millbury Street Elementary School.
Excellent, all right. Who's starting? Hayden, you're driving, okay. Just remember to project.
Okay, so at Nature's Classroom, every cabin has a name. You have bunk beds with people that you like and you write who you want to be in your cabin with, I think, two weeks before. You have busy bathrooms and lights out are usually by 10:00 p.m. They do fire drills and if there is a fire, you use a, I don't know what it's called, but it's like a metal thing. And you play card games with the cabins, the counselors that you're in your cabins with.
My name's Hayden.
Hayden, speak up.
My name's Hayden and the food was pretty good. You get to eat outside in a tent, there's a buffet. It gets a little crowded, but you get to sit with your leader, which gets picked by, I think, the principals. And I think the best night was probably Taco Tuesday.
Sweet. What do they serve? I'm just kidding.
Hi, I'm sorry to tell you, I am from North Street. The adventure groups, we did a lot of fun, fun things. I was with Makayla, we got to do like tons of activities. Like one time, we were in the woods, we got to build a shelter with all these like logs we found in the woods. We got to like make fires and stuff, and I thought it was really cool.
On the all-day hike, we hiked like six and a half miles round trip. And when we got to the summit, we ate lunch and it was a sandwich, cookies, a granola bar, and something else. And we took lots of stops.
Yeah, nice. So this is the science fair. Each station has experiments with different counselors. You rotate to inside of a court. And one of my favorite was when you did UBLAC with one of those counselor and you dip your finger and then like, we just talk about what you, how it happened and what you did. And this thing that's called Tom's Tape Tablet, I think?
Yeah.
You put it in a bottle and then you add water and you shake it and then you flip the bottle and then it's supposed to like pop up and see what can go higher.
The four Cs is cooperation, communication, commitment, and care. You get, you get them, you can pass them around from your leader and, yeah.
There was many choice activities you could have chosen from. I personally chose egg babies and forest fires, I forgot the other ones, but I thought it was really fun. With the egg babies, you got to like make an egg and you got to like design it and then you could like hide it, it was kind of like a game. And then whoever's egg last stands like wins pretty much. And then the forest fires, you got to like make the city out of like, like, like cart, I forget what it's called, cardboard. And then you could put like vaseline in it so it would light even more. I thought it was pretty cool. And yeah, I liked the choice activities.
At the night sing, we just, there were like a couple people that played guitar and then they showed like the lyrics of a song up on a projector and then the entire camp would just sit and listen to the songs.
Do we have any questions?
Yeah, any questions from the group? Liz?
I just wondered, for all those fifth graders watching, would you guys recommend that they attend Nature's Classroom next year?
Yes.
Yeah, thumbs up from everyone? All right, great.
Any other question? I have a question if you guys want to go. So how was it being with North and Millbury Street together? Were you, was it nice to meet some new friends? And do you, what do you think about next year, having had a chance to kind of get to know people?
It was really nice. I made a lot new friends and I think it's a nice experience that since you're gonna be with the people next year in middle school, I think it's nice that you know them better more.
That's great. Cool. Any other question?
Great presentation, great job. Thanks for coming tonight.
All right, yeah. All right, well, good luck, good luck at GMS. It's a great place, you're gonna have a lot of fun, have a good summer. Stay cool.
Just in case. It's up to, I just.
Pretty much knew everybody.
May answer a question.
My question? Thanks. And next up, really excited to have high school junior Kayden Ashmore come and present. He won our science fair and went to states.
He's gonna talk about, he's dominated the world.
He's dominating the world.
Kayden is a junior at GHS, soon to be senior, awesome kid, fantastic high jumper, athlete, just, he's top-notch. Go at it, Kayden.
Okay, so my project was a control system for an autonomous sailboat. And the reason why I came up with starting this project, excuse me, was that during the time of last summer, I took a course of learning how to sail and I really enjoyed it and I was really passionate about sailing and I wanted to keep sailing into next year and I have been sailing now. And so I wanted to do something that had to do with sailboats. And then during that same time, I was on an MIT course for an autonomous underwater vehicle. And I really liked the coding that it took to make that autonomous. And I figured, why not fuse together the sailing aspect that I enjoy and the autonomous aspect? So that made an autonomous sailboat. And so next, I'll be saying a two-to-three-minute elevator pitch on my project, a quick little demo, and then the achievements I got with my project and the Science Engineering Club that I founded and the Science Engineering Fair as a whole. So my project is a control system that reads the wind's speed and direction. It reads the current location of the boat and it reads the current heading. And it uses this to navigate the seas without any human intervention. And it can do this even when the GPS is inaccurate or unavailable in cases where you go into like a bad storm or if you go under a bridge. And so a lot of the world is moving towards autonimation or autonomous vehicles of kinds. And one aspect of this is autonomous boats. And those can be used for surveying underwater currents or landforms around. And I'd like to further this research into autonomous sailboats because they can last a lot longer on the seas, they're more environmentally friendly and cost-efficient. And so for these boats, navigation is critical. And a good option for this is using a GPS. But at these times where it goes under a bridge or through a bad sea, it needs a backup approach. And so sailboats need to know the wind's direction and speed as well to know which way to turn the sail or how fast you're going to reach your destined location. And so this is difficult on a rocking boat because of this inertia. A lot of anemometers that calculate the wind speed and direction, it can be affected by this inertia and on a rocking boat, that could prove difficult and problems. So I designed and built a 3D system that has an extremely powerful antenna, a GPS, an IMU, which is an inertial measurement unit, and a ultrasonic wind speed and direction sensor with no moving parts. And these are all combined together into a single 3D-printed unit that I made in my CAD/CAM class after I finished all my classwork. So the IMU knows what direction the boat is heading in. It knows if the boat is tilting forwards or backwards or side to side or any combination of these. And then all that information is fused together to estimate the location of this boat and even when the GPS is inaccurate or unavailable. And it does all this with the wind speed and direction. And combined together, it allows an accurate approach to navigating the seas. And so my merging of the GPS and my backup navigational technique, which is Dead Reckoning, when those are fused together, that's my novel concept and it was a key part of my innovation of my project. So here's my demo. It needs permission.
Yeah, that's the one you shared with me, so you can request it and give it to yourself.
How would I accept it?
Do you have your phone?
Yeah, I do.
Is your, is your email on your phone?
Yeah, I can quickly grab that.
Look at you, tech savvy.
It should have worked now. Refresh.
Yeah.
Look at that.
There you go. Nice.
Wow. Been waiting 12 years for that.
Here is my control system and here's a mini one boat. Here is my GUI on a display. And on the top left, you can see the pitch of the boat. On the top right, you can see the roll of the boat. In the top middle, you can see the compass. And on the bottom, you can see the wind speed and direction. So on the top left, you can see the pitch of the boat. On the top right, you can see the roll of the boat. And then the top middle, compass. And then, turn on a small fan. Here is the wind's speed and direction. Yeah, thank you. Here is my control system and here's a mini one.
Wow. It's like I didn't go to high school.
Glad you said it. It's like, I don't know if I'm smart enough to ask you any questions. You just keep here.
Here is my control system. Okay, so the achievements I got, and this isn't in the time order because the Grafton School Fair was after the Worcester Regional one, but it's just going in ascending order of the number of competitors. So the first one was the school fair in which I got first place and that was against numerous groups that were showing off their interests and their projects. And then I went on to the Worcester Regional Science and Engineering Fair where there were 112 competitors and I won second place and the National Geographic Top Innovator Award. And then I moved on to the Massachusetts Science and Engineering Fair where there were 308 competitors from across the state and I won first place in this and the Engineering Excellence Award from National Grid. And that just meant that I got the top-scoring engineering project in the competition. And then after this, I went on to the ISF, which is the International Science and Engineering Fair. And this was held in Dallas over six days where there were 1,600 competitors from 64 countries and 49 states. And I was a finalist in this competition. And I learned a lot about presenting to these people because you were only allowed about five minutes for your presentation, so you had to fit a lot of the important information into these five minutes. And I learned a lot about networking with these companies that were sponsoring them. And so then finally, for the Science and Engineering Club that I founded and the science fair as a whole, it, I just wanted to stress how important statistics is for these projects because to get far, you have to do some statistical analysis on your project. And so I met with my statistics teacher, Mr. Gamache, and over the course of a couple classes, he gave me some hints or pointed me in the right direction of what tests to use on my project to get the right amount of data that I wanted to show in my project. And for any science labs or science projects, you could include a presentation board so that students would learn how to present clearly or how to present their information better on a poster board format. And then students could keep a written logbook for their science labs and that's just, you have to write the date and then everything that you do from start to finish, whether that's the research you do, to the testing, to the results. It's just everything from start to finish. And then in any classes like CAD/CAM or manufacturing where you build these projects, it could, the teachers could promote the science fair. And so those projects that the students make, they could enter those into the science fair. And it would be a great way to kind of hit two birds with one stone, you know, do the classes project as well as enter into the science fair. And then just supporting the Science and Engineering Club that I founded and the science fair. This year, we had a lot more members than the year before. And then the year before that with COVID, there was no club. So I'd just like to grow this club because I think it's very important in a lot of students' lives with engineering being the top job at the moment with kind of dominating the market with, no matter where you are, there's always a type of engineering you could do. And so I think it's a great opportunity for students to learn these skills and learn these things with engineering. And yeah, thank you.
Wow, thank you, yeah. What do we got? Liz?
So first of all, this is amazing, congratulations. This is, I'm sure we're all very, very impressed with what you've done here. Assuming you want to go into engineering.
Yeah.
I also started my career as an engineer, my first degree was in engineering, so I'm curious what, what type of engineering. I don't want to assume it's something in the marine area, but I'd like to.
So I haven't actually decided on that yet. I think I'm a little late to get there, but.
No, you're not.
No, I know, it's not. I'm not too late, but I'm not early either. But I think I'd be closer in the realm of mechanical engineering or software because I take lots of comp sci courses as well as different manufacturing, CAD/CAM, physics, and chemistry, things like that. So I haven't decided yet, but most likely mechanical or software.
There's so many different courses you can take in college too. You might start with mechanical and then find something that's, that's more you, so that's awesome. This is kind of a personal question, where, where did you learn to sail? Was it, I'm curious about.
It's Regatta Point on Lakeview Sig. They've got courses there where there was a family sailing because my sister goes to a college in New York called Webb Institute and that's a big naval engineering school and she had to learn to sail to go there. And so I just joined her and I really enjoyed it. And so I took a course to get my sailing license on a Hunter 15, which is a smaller sailboat that fits about two to four people max. And I got my license with that. And then this year, I've been working on my license on a keel boat, which is just a larger boat that has an inside area to it as well.
And my last question is, do you need the number of a good patent attorney? I think you do.
Maybe. Yeah, that could be nice.
I'll get that too.
Keep in touch.
That's all I have.
That's all you have? Okay. Any, anybody else want to give out their phone number?
I am not a patent attorney, by the way, but I know I work with good patent attorneys.
Can I go?
You may. Amy?
First of all, super impressive. I can't even, like, I've done science fairs, I've judged science fairs. This is like beyond stuff that I've seen. What's next in terms of this, this project? Are you, is there, is there more you want to study to build on this? Are you not allowed to do that or do you have to pick something else next year?
Yeah, so since I'm a junior, I still have one more year to compete in the science fair. And so you can continue on, but each year, they only take like the project you've done that year. And so you'd have to say everything you completed the past years and then what you did then. So as you get farther, you have to do kind of more and more or else if you keep doing the same amount of work, then they won't take it for as much. So next year, I'm planning on making the actual sailboat and then I'd be putting the control system inside the sailboat so it's fully autonomous. So I'd be using a CAD/CAM class to 3D design and print the, maybe a one-to-two-meter hull of the boat and then print that out and hopefully connect the control system to it and get it moving around.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Yes.
And engineering undecided as a major exists for a reason. You are not late.
Yeah.
Anybody else? You are?
Amazing.
Thank you.
I'll give you some more accolades because it was amazing. Tell us a little bit about the Science and Engineering Club and how you're sort of attracting students and mentoring some of the younger students and how we could potentially support that too and continue to grow the club.
Yeah, so I'm the president of the club with a co-president. And we have a Schoology page that has all kinds of resources for the new members. I made my own website that has all kinds of information on how to get started on research, how to choose your project, how to make a poster board, how to conduct tests, all the things from start to finish. And I had a part of a timeline so students know if, if the choosing a project is between a certain two dates, if they're doing it way later, they might want to pick up the pace a bit. So I kind of just, I kind of just mapped it out so students would kind of know how much time each section should take them preferably. And, and so a lot of students have been using that website. It has lots of views, even on different parts of the world. Other people have found, I don't know how, but lots of people from Canada, weirdly enough. But so different students use that Schoology page, different students come into this club. We hold each two weeks, there's one meeting. In the beginning stages, we hold more meetings than later on because later on, there isn't as much to tell them. The main part of the club is teaching them kind of the steps that they go through it. And then later on, they conduct most of it. But if they, we still have meetings every couple weeks or so in which they'd come in, ask any questions they have or if they need any of our help from me or the, the club advisor is Mr. Kelleher, the physics teacher. And so any questions they have from Mr. Keller, any questions from, from me or the co-president. And then if they have any tips they want to share with other members because since it's a growing space, it's not just for me to help other people. If other people did it last year and. If other people did it last year and they're now a sophomore and they did it freshman year, then they can help the rising freshmen. And so I'm in the middle of looking for someone to take my spot as well, because I'll be leaving. And so if anyone wants to be the president, then I'll be looking at that, so they should, they should stay on there, you know, on their guard for that or something.
That's great.
And so, yeah, just promoting it on any kind of website, if the school committee has something like that or in any other classes, like I said, for project-based classes. Mainly STEM classes, it probably wouldn't be too fitting to promote in an English class, but. Yeah, in any classes like that or any school committee websites, anything like that or any way to get information to other people. Preferably, I think, rising middle schoolers into this, into the high school, so they have the maximum amount of time to work on their projects.
Nice.
Can I just ask one more?
Yeah, of course.
What, what is the address of your website?
I think it's just my email, so I think it's just. It's either C Ashmore, wait, what is it? Kayden@Ashmore.com, I believe.
All right, I'll contact you. Get that, and I can share that with other people.
Okay, cool.
Anybody else with any questions?
Did you start this project like when you first, like freshman year, or did you start it this year? And also, do you recommend if people join the club to like continue their project throughout the years or start a new one every year?
So I start, so freshman year, I started the club in my sophomore years last year, because in my freshman year, there was no real advertisement. I didn't even know there was a science fair in the school. And so I didn't do a project my freshman year. And when it got time for the fair, there were just a couple of people that were on a Zoom call presenting, and I missed it and I had no clue it was even a thing. And so that next year, I started the club and worked on advertising with different emails broadcasted to the school as well as flyers around, just trying to get the word out so that more people could join the club. And so I started my project. Last year, I did a brainwave project. Mr. Cummings, I think will remember that. It didn't get very far because people didn't like, there were human participants, because they have a lot of varying variables that it's hard to control. And so I didn't get very far with that. And so this year, I went for an engineering approach, which I found to be easier because there weren't as many variables. Of course, you need more STEM knowledge for that, but. So I started this project this year, and I started in, I believe, September is when I started this project. And I hope to finish it next year kind of earlier on because I'd like to show colleges it before May, because the international fair is mid-May, and so at that point, it'll be too late to say if I placed at the international fair, but I'll be able to say that I got through to it. So I'd like to have the finished project before then.
I'm just going to take a guess that I think you're going to be okay getting into college, just putting that out there.
There's always the chance, but I hope so.
A knock on wood, but I feel good, I feel good about your chances. I love that you took a look at what, I mean, a typical science, right? You took a look last year at maybe what didn't work and what you wanted to do differently and then changed it for this year, which is fantastic. I also really appreciated in your presentation, talking about what we could do differently or better to help others in the science and how you recommended what classes you need to take. And I think, you know, sometimes, like you mentioned, statistics, which a lot of people maybe wouldn't think of that they need to take in science, and that sometimes things come into your life like statistics that help you get to a better place, which is pretty awesome. So just congratulations and thank you so much for coming. You, I'm going to give you an open invitation to come back whenever, as long as I'm here, and good luck with everything.
Yeah, thank you all for having me. It was a pleasure.
Yeah, it was great.
It's amazing. It's amazing.
I remember the day he was born.
I'm right.
He was my neighbor.
Me too. I worked with his parents.
I worked with his parents 20 years ago. Oh, he's still here? You can certainly go, but we're going to sit here and talk about you some more. Thank you, Kayden.
He's in the room.
Okay, next up, I think so, yeah.
All right, we've got Joe Armenti and Betsy Labonte.
From Witsen's.
From Witsen's Food Service. Joe, I believe, is the regional manager. Is that, yes? And Betsy, food service director? Is that the title? Nice. I'm sure they're both fantastic. What I know of Joe is awesome, but I can tell you, Betsy, we see her excellence every single day. And we don't take it for granted, but boy, are we glad that we have her in Grafton. Just among the countless examples, forget the entirety of COVID, just yesterday?
Yeah, it was yesterday.
Oh my God, it feels like a year ago. Yesterday, we lost power for hours at North Street. People just expect lunch to miraculously appear, which is not easy without power immediately. By the time I called, and I called quickly, Betsy already had her team working on it. They had bagged lunches, ready to go, first lunch at 10:30. They were ready to move things out of the freezer, like, they just do such an exceptional job, so thank you, both of you.
Thank you.
And they are here to give us an update on food services.
Yep.
Okay. That's quite an act to follow. He was incredible, huh?
Betsy's pretty awesome.
Okay, we provided you with some statistics for this year. Basically, the lunch counts, the average daily participation for lunch was about 1,600 kids a day. Breakfast, about 385 a day. That's about over 52%. About 17% for breakfast. Each month, it was about 2,800 meals, lunches, and about 6,700 breakfasts. And that's based on the enrollment. If you really look at the average daily attendance, it's actually higher. The universal free meals is in the governor's budget. It hasn't passed yet, but we're pretty sure it is going to pass. So again, meals will be free again next year. Also, in the state budget, they're proposing it to make it permanently free, and I believe that would cost about $165 million for the state, and that would, my understanding is they would use the millionaire's tax to cover that. We were also able to secure a grant, a 16,000 grant, $16,000 grant. It's called the Northeast Food Schools Grant from the state, and it's basically to use on local unprocessed or minimally processed foods that come from local farms, fishermen, within a 400-mile radius. We've already worked with one group, started to work with one group called Red Tomato, which is a local farm hub that uses eco-certified products. And we're looking at some other local vendors in the area. We also received supply chain assistance grants, which go into the revolving fund. We have a surplus in the fund. Also, just going forward for next year, there are some changes. There's going to be limits on sugar and things like yogurt and cereal. They haven't have a final ruling out there yet. Also, the other one is milk, flavored milk. They may have just flavored milk in the high school, but again, that's, they're not sure just to reduce the sugar. Whole grains from 80 to 100%, but we already use 100%, so that won't be a major change. And they're looking at reducing the sodium, having a reduction of about 10% in sodium over the next couple of years. And then Betsy has a few things.
Some things about how this year went. It was a rough start. We were down eight team members at the beginning of school, and throughout the school year, we were able to fill seven of those eight positions. So we're still looking to add somebody at our high school for the next year, so if anybody knows anyone who's interested, reach out, we'll, we'll set them up. We were able to succeed with eight people down because our core group of team members were here. So the ladies who had five, 10, 20 years in food service really came out this year and gave it all they got. So very happy, very happy to have the team that we have to take care of the kids. Because of the surplus in the, the funding, we were able to replace some equipment that had worn out. So at the high school, we had to replace two-deck ovens. The middle school, we were able to replace the entire service line, both sides, with upgraded cold wells and heat wells that run a lot more efficient than what we had in the past. The Millbury Street School, we replaced the steamers. South Grafton, last summer, they replaced the entire walk-in cooler. And over this summer, they're going to replace steamers and ovens as well. So we'll have some brand-new equipment to get the job done, which is very helpful. So with all this fun new equipment and great team that we have, we're looking forward next year to doing more promotions. We're going to have something called the Yard Bird, which is a Chick-fil-A-style sandwich that's served on a brioche bun with pickles and a special sweet smoky sauce. We've actually tested it out this year at the middle school, and it was bananas. We also have something called the Tot Spot, which Domino's totally ripped off from us. So we have different loaded tater tot options that we'll have. We, we tested three this year. We did the breakfast one. We did the barbecue chicken one, and we did the loaded one, just like a loaded baked potato, so that went over really well. And like we had promised last year, we were able to do the plant-based meals, the vegetables, the middle school and the high school. So we tested three of those. They went over really well. The best place was the middle school, believe it or not. I wouldn't have picked that in a million years, but the middle school loved it. It was crazy. They said we were like Chipotle. I'll take on it like that. So we're going to try to roll that down to the elementary level next year, maybe with the older kids, see how it goes. So we'll do different flavors of those going forward. We also have a Nashville Hot Sandwich, which is a extremely hot and sweet sauce. We dunk a chicken in, and serve, so we'll give that a try. And something else we are calling an Incredible, which is, features a grain. So it's a grain baseball with a brown rice base or a quinoa base with different toppings. So we'll try those out next year and see how it goes.
Nice. Thank you. Any questions from the committee? Wes?
Hi.
Hi. I'm really hungry now. I was just wondering, it sounds like you have some really good vegetarian options, and I'm sure you have other dietary needs that you have to have different options for gluten-free and things like that. Do you feel like you're, like you're able to meet the demands for, for those, all of those things? Or are there any challenges that you've had in, in facing that?
No, we're, we're completely able to work with any dietary needs, dietary restrictions with no issue, so.
Yeah.
Gluten-free, we've been doing for, for many years.
Sure.
But now we have people eating differently, so we're, we're trying to come up with recipes and ways to, to, you know, have them participate in school lunch.
We always work with the nurse. If someone, if a child has an allergy or something, they usually go to the nurse, and then the nurse works with us and the parent to review the menu to make sure we can accommodate them.
Thank you.
Rebecca?
Hi.
Hi, it's not really a question. It's more of a comment. I love the feedback I hear about your breakfast a lot. I hear a lot of good things about, not just the food, but it's just like a really amazing place where kids can sort of get together in the morning. And I've, I've seen a couple connections that have sort of come through my home or I've heard about that, like, they aren't in classes together and they're really good friends now. And it's just kind of a beautiful community, and I really appreciate it.
Any other questions? I mean, I would just like to thank you. I think, I think of you as a partner with us in education. Jay mentioned it, but especially Betsy, you are kind of, you're in the schools, you know what's going on. You know, I worked a lot with you during COVID, and I just know how hard you worked and beyond. And are we leading into the vote from this, Jay? Is this, is that separate?
Yeah, they don't have to say for that, but that would be next.
Okay, okay. I'll just say it. When we were evaluating what we were going to do for future, it just, I mean, the thing that kept coming up over and over again was the people at Witsen's and the, what you do above and beyond for, for the district. I really, it, it's surprise, it surprises me sometimes. They're not, they're not Grafton employees. They're, they're Witsen's. So you work for Witsen's, and, but it feels like you're a part of, of our group, our team. You are. So I appreciate that.
Some of the ladies, when we first came here, that worked for Grafton are still with us 30 years later. Some of the leads. And they feel the same way, that they, you know, we're all just part of the, yeah, part of the community.
Yeah, 100%. Yeah, great. Any other?
No.
All right. Well, thank you. So I guess you don't need to stay for the vote, but you're welcome to if you want to.
Joe, we'll stay for the vote.
All right.
Thank you.
Jump into it?
Yes, please.
So last, thank you both. Last week, we completed the formalized bidding process for food service. We received two bids. Witsen's Culinary Group was chosen, and tonight, we're looking for the school committee to award the contract to the Witsen's Culinary Group. Anita put together a one-page overview and included a suggested motion for that purpose.
Yeah, go ahead, Wes. Is this, so this is the one-page overview? It just, okay.
The six-five.
It's in our packet?
Yep.
Okay. So.
If you want, we can give a little more.
I'm just curious about information, because it, I know in the overview, it says that you and Laura received other information and reviewed that, and.
Yep. Yep. There's a very formalized process with a point rating system. It took us, I don't know, four hours?
Yeah.
So, yeah, we have the, you have to unseal the bids, you have all the same materials, and you have to just walk through it step by step. And then through the point rating system, one, one emerges, and then at the very end, you turn towards the finances. That counts in, and then you make a final decision.
Okay. And is there, is there a document exhibiting the contract, or is this just?
That's the next, the next, so we'd award the contract, and then another phase is actually signing that contract. So we haven't done that yet.
Okay. I just, I feel a little funny, like, the, the proposed motion is that we're awarding a contract, and I feel a little, I feel like I don't have a lot of information. I don't know what the contract says.
You can certainly wait on, on doing it.
That may just be me, but I'm.
I think maybe we give a little more background, Jay. So basically, you have to have, it's three people. That's all that you have to have on this committee. And you have a criteria that you have to check off that they give you. You have to have how many students they've served over the years. Do they, have they been in business for five-plus years? Do they offer marketing of their programs? Do they offer a selected out of food? And you get these two giant binders. So we only got two bids out of all of that. One of them was our longtime vendor, Witsen's. One was another vendor whose name has escaped me. But, and they were, I'll say, they were fairly similar in their marketing materials. So we looked through, we went, had to answer a bunch of questions. We found the answers in the binders. Okay, yep, they've both been in business for 10 years. Yep, they both have a variety of dietary foods. Yep, they both have a, somebody in district who is in charge of things. They, they both have all of that. We had to also look at their financial stability, and one of the groups, not Witsen, we couldn't find their financial stability, so they lost. And that's, this is all public, right? I mean, it's in that.
Yes.
Yeah. So, so they lost points on that. So Witsen's. So Witten's came out ahead at the end regardless, because this other one didn't meet the criteria of what we were needing to do the criteria of then. Like Jay said, you open up this secret document, and it, and it gives you, like, how much money you're gonna, they're going to, like, be able to return to use the, to be able to replace refrigerators, replace that kind of things. And Witten's, and so let's pretend they both came out as a tie beforehand, which they didn't, but let's say they did. You have to go with whoever the number is bigger regardless. So Witten's also happened to be bigger. So even if, let's say, they were like, everything else was even, we would have had to have gone with Witten's. They weren't even, so before we even opened the packet, Witten's was clearly the winner unless they were going to come in and we were going to be losing a ton of money. So it's, the bidding process is, there's not a lot of room for us unless we were, I think, maybe super, super unhappy with Witten's, which we have not been. I mean, we haven't hurt.
And who was the, you said there were three people?
Anita. So she has myself, Anita, and.
Oh, okay.
And.
Fundamentally, you're saying, you want to see the con, the actual contract.
So can we change this to that we are going to choose them pending, I mean.
I, I wouldn't. If you're going to do anything, I would just put it off. And there's official wording, I'd have to dive into it. I, Anita dealt with it, but it's, it's super formalized.
Okay. And, and where does this come from, the procedure that dictates?
Desi.
It's from Desi?
Yeah. It was.
I'm sorry?
It's the RFP process.
RFP process, but under Desi.
From Desi.
Okay. And it says that first, the school committee has to, has to agree to award the contract, and then you negotiate the contract.
That's right. Your bid, what you're essentially saying is, out of whoever, we had two in this case, but that the five bidders were awarding the contract, the same basic concept for roofing. We'll have five different companies bid, we go through the same basic process, pick one, award it, and then work through the contract. There are times where the contract doesn't get worked through, and that actually happened with the North's, North Grafton Roof. It was awarded, we decided to pull the plug on it, didn't go forward and rebid. And that works now, being done.
So that can happen. And what is it that with the option of up to four additional, that, that's going to be? So if we vote, if we follow this motion tonight, that would be part of the contract?
Correct. That would be, the general structure would be, it's one, it's really one-year contracts, which is what we want. You don't want to lock in, like, transportation doesn't fall under that same setup. And you'll, you'll hear districts that are in a bad contract, and they're stuck for like five years. So this is ideal for us.
Okay. Right.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay. Is, I mean, I would say, regardless, I would like somebody to make a motion. If you're not comfortable with it, we can vote it down.
Madam Chair. I make, oh, is it me or her?
I call it on Leora.
Okay. Madam Chair, I make a motion to award Grafton Public Schools Food Services Management Contract to Witten's Culinary Group for a one-year period beginning July first, twenty twenty-three, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, with the option of up to four additional one-year renewals. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. I'll take a vote. All in favor? Okay, motion carried, five-zero. Thank you, and thank you, Witten's, and thanks, Anita.
Thank you again. May I keep on going?
Keep on keeping on.
All right. Another regulation here. Tonight, I'm looking for the school committee approval of the hire of Kathleen Lungarini as Director of Finance. Massachusetts regulations require a school committee approval of a handful of positions, Special Ed, Special Education Director, Superintendent, and Finance Director. I've provided you her resume. You're certainly going to get numerous opportunities to meet with her. Kathleen's fantastic. We are just very, very impressed with her, as they have been in Westboro. She's been there for the past seven years, serving as their Financial Coordinator and HR Generalist over there. And if approved, she would start on July first.
Any questions? Liz?
Sorry, I'm looking through her resume again. She, this would be a similar role to Anita's, where she, would she deal with the buses too?
No, no, that's going to fall under Frank Rothwell with operations, thankfully. It makes the job, it's still a very hard job, but a lot more doable than doing two full-time jobs at the same time.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions? I look forward to meeting after.
Yeah, she's terrific.
So we need to vote?
We do, we need a motion.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move that the school committee agree to the appointment of Kathleen Lungarini?
Yes.
As Finance Director.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor? All right, welcome Kathleen. I'm sure you're watching. I love all these made-up people that we think are watching our meetings. It's so good. Congratulations, that's great. I'm thrilled. She sounds like she's going to be a great member of the team. So we'll get her in.
When would she start?
July first.
July first, okay. Oh, you said that, okay.
All right, next up, we have our reorganization subcommittee assignments. And before we jump into this, I think we wanted to do a revote on one of our executive functions, I believe. Amy, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah. So I would like to thank Rebecca for nominating me for clerk at our last meeting, and thank you to the committee for electing me clerk. As of last night, I have a new time commitment with another organization that could interfere down the road, especially with the creation of that report that we all love so much. And it was also a little bit of a misunderstanding, as Leora and I, like, stared at each other in that moment, like, this isn't quite right, but I couldn't remember why. So I am going to resign as clerk respectfully, and with the chair's permission, I would like to nominate Leora Bram as clerk.
Second. Great. All right. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
I just want to say that you have to move over here. I'm your clerk. Yeah.
I think I said over there as clerk, but you're welcome to.
Oh, no, I'm good. If you'd like to switch, I'm happy to switch.
Leora, do you accept the nomination?
I do accept the nomination. Thank you, Amy.
Okay. All those in favor?
Do I vote for myself?
You always vote for yourself. What in the world? Any, all right.
You can.
There's only five of us.
I think I just want to piggyback. Thank you, Amy. I mean, our group, we work very closely. We are a team. We are not, I mean.
Exactly.
All of us are, we're very lucky to have such a great group on school committee, and these positions are a little bit of extra work for people, but it means nobody's voice is stronger than the others. I just want to be very clear about that. I feel very strongly about that, that sometimes these positions get blown up on other committees, and we're just here to run a smooth me, a smooth meeting and get the job done for our students. My meetings are less smooth than others, I guess. Okay.
She's me, I'm laughing.
Oh, Amy laughed at that.
I did. It's cute.
All right, well, it's cute. Cute. All right, so now we're going to go on to our subcommittees, which is also where the real work begins and, and ends. So the first one that I did it, I may not have done it in alphabetical order. My original thought, I didn't. But is first is the American Rescue Plan Act, that's ARPA. That is, I'm on that committee now, I'm the chair of that. It has been going on, some may say, a little too long. We're still trying. We have a little bit of left money that we're trying to spend for mental health. It's a joint committee, I don't have to read this all, but for the, with the Select Board, FINCOM, trying to spend the American Rescue Plan Act. We have a little bit of money left. So I would like to stay on that committee if it's okay with you, and, and finish this out. And hopefully, we're going to be done soon, because it's been going on for a little bit. I don't know how to, do we want to vote one at a time?
Take one at a time, yeah.
Yeah, I think we should do that, so.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I nominate Laura Offen as our representative on the ARPA Committee.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Thank you, I'm honored.
Congratulations.
Thank you, it's, it's an honor. Capital Improvement Planning Committee, this works with a group, again, with FINCOM, Select Board, members of the community to work at our capital projects. Amy Marr has been our longtime member on that, and I believe wants to stay.
Yeah, I would like to stay. I, when I joined the school committee, I, I really didn't understand anything about capital planning, and, and now I feel like I've finally figured it out after four years. I would like to remain unless there's somebody really dying to get on. I do feel like we're kind of at a crucial juncture with this process. And if, you know, if somebody's interested in taking it next year, you know, meetings are open, please watch them and, you know, come and join the discussion. But we, we generally don't have anybody show up. We just advise the, the town administrator. It says we meet once or twice a month. That's not really true anymore. It's more like we meet three or four times a year, now that we have the nice, smooth process in place. So I would like to remain if the committee chooses.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I nominate Amy Marr as our representative to CIPC.
My second.
All right, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Now, nobody's dying to challenge Amy. All right, all those in favor? Excellent. Congratulations, Amy, and thank you for your work. All right, Policy Subcommittee. I think you guys know what we do. We've, we're moving the process to MASC, but we will still be taking a look at policies, and when questions come up, they will go to the Subcommittee. I know, we've been on it for a long time, but Liz and I would still like to stay on it. We're a really good team, and we're just about over the finish line, and eventually I will bow off of this and give it to somebody else, but.
Yeah, if anyone wants, I, I would also like to be on it for just maybe one more year. As we're, like Laura said, crossing the finish line with converting a lot of the policies to MASC, it's been a lot of work, probably more than I expected, and we're also, you know, cleaning everything up, and, and it's been a lot of work the last three years to get two-hundred-and-eighty-eight policies reviewed and, and cleaned up online. We got a shout-out from the Select Board a couple of weeks ago on the way that the policies were handled and set up. And so I think, I think we've made great progress, and I'd like, I'd like one more year to finish it up. But that being said, if we do get nominated tonight, or appointed tonight, if someone wants to come to our meetings, I mean, we do, our meetings are posted, and, and people can watch them.
Yeah, they're on Zoom.
Yeah, they're on Zoom. So if you want to watch, if you think that you, anyone would be interested in doing that in the future, that'd be a great thing to do, and kind of see how it goes.
Nobody looked too upset when we were talking about it. I'm looking, watching Rebecca and Leora and Amy, and none of them.
Well, if I could say something, Madam Chair, I, I would love to serve on this committee at some point before I leave the committee. So I don't see any point in changing it now, because you're in the middle of this process. So I have, by all means, finish the process that you've worked so hard on, and, and maybe next year, it would be a good time to shake things up a little.
Yeah. Great.
Madam Chair, make a motion that we appoint Laura Offen and Elizabeth Spiny to the Policy Subcommittee. Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? I laugh, because this is like a lot of work and a pain, and we're like, come on, we need to finish it.
It is, it was a lot of work, so we want to see that phase to completion.
Not, not to make a non to any other committees in town, but this actually used to be the one you would stick the numbers on for, for a hazing purpose when I got on. And not that we haze at Grafton School District ever, but I'm just talking about another committee.
We have a policy about that?
And it was, um, Policy Subcommittee, and I, but I have stuck, I, I've been on it, because I really like it, so. All right.
It's a good thing nobody ever watches these meetings.
Yeah.
I'm just giving a little historical background. Okay.
We're the Fun Committee, everybody.
Moroska said.
We do.
Budget Subcommittee. So I'm, I just want to say a little bit about this Subcommittee. So we had Leora and Graciela on it together. It didn't meet a lot last year. We are approaching another year of an override, whether it's this year or next year. I don't know if we know yet. I don't know if any other committee in town is talking about it. This is the year that this committee needs to really work with the other committees, share our challenges, and bring them along so they're not surprised. So I do think this is a very important committee. It can meet, it doesn't have to meet a lot, but once we have an idea on the budget, I think there needs to be a workshop with the members. Jay needs to be there. Kathleen needs, you know, we need to have a group. So I'm very passionate about this committee, Leora.
May I say something else? I agree, I think it's important. I also think that it should not be too fairly new to the committee members. It was last year, which was fine. We were both kind of able to listen and learn, but I think a team, I'm happy to serve again. But I would ask that I serve with somebody who's been on the committee a bit longer than I have, and perhaps been through an override.
I, I would, I'd be interested in doing that if.
Okay.
Subject to any other overwhelming.
I think that's a great idea.
But I'm throwing my hat out there.
You throwing your hand in?
I'm throwing my hat.
All right.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I nominate Leora Bram and Elizabeth Spiny to the Budget Subcommittee.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Congratulations. Do this, for the record, I would have done that. Proud, because it has never.
You're the front line.
Never done what I wanted it to do, what I know you can do it, Liz. Feel it. Okay.
And I can't?
Well. Ouch. It's never done what I wanted it to do, so.
Okay, fair.
I'm excited to see what you can do together, Leora. I'm proud and honored to have you on the committee.
Just wait.
I know, it's going to be amazing. Whew, off the rails. Okay.
Who knew that?
Payroll and warrant. So I'm on this now. A long time ago, we agreed that the chair shouldn't be the one doing it, so I'm going to bow out. This, all you have to do is be the official signer of the warrant and payroll, you review it. The only request is you need to be able to be on your computer and, and turn it around pretty quickly. So if you're somebody who doesn't check your email daily, or it's at night.
Do you have any specific examples?
Nope, I wouldn't recommend, I recommend you to do it. You need to be somebody who's at your desk and can, and get it turned around. Usually, it's like day up. It's super easy. Or you can go in, but you just need to be able to do that. Super easy and fun.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
So one of the biggest critiques people have about me is that I'm always online.
You?
Always.
I have never, I have never noticed, Amy.
Constantly. I'm terrible at texting, but on the computer, I am.
Really?
And as long as we.
Is there like an app you really like a lot?
Facebook?
Not the TikTok.
I would like to throw my hat in for this. I feel like it's something that I can do very easily and without much fuss. But if somebody else is dying to do it, that's cool too.
I appreciate that, Amy. I'm never at my computer.
Okay, thank you.
Can I have a nomination?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would like to nominate Amy Marr to be our representative for the Payroll and Warrant Signature.
Okay.
Committee.
I know, it's not really a committee, but.
It's a committee.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All right, great job. All right, Health and Wellness. Okay, we had, Graciela was on it last year. I actually think we, this should have two members if there's somebody interested, because it's a big job, and I don't see why we wouldn't have two. I saw Rebecca. I'm very interested. Is very interested. Anybody else very interested? And it can only be one if somebody isn't interested. It was, it was.
I mean, I'm interested, but I feel like I'm already on a couple of committees, so wouldn't want to overstep. If we need two people.
We, we do not need two people.
I mean, if, if the committee wants, really wants to.
But you can also just go. I went once and offered my two cents, and it was a lovely evening. And then I never went again, so.
Same.
Okay, all right. So we can just have one.
Where are you interested? Not so much?
No.
Okay.
I mean, I'm obviously interested in wellness in our school.
Sure you are.
Wow. I would also be happy to be the second person.
Too late.
But not Mary.
And I'll be negative about it. It's the last meeting of the year, folks.
I love Health and Wellness, and also, no. So Liz, I mean, I, I don't, somebody make a nomination.
Madam Chair?
Yeah, Amy's going to decide it.
I nominate Rebecca Sokoe and.
Excellent.
Sure. Leora Bram, who loves wellness, to the Health and Wellness Committee.
I think Liz is disappointed.
Are you disappointed?
I mean, I would like to do it, yeah. I think I'd like to do it more than Leora would like to do it.
I'm torn.
But.
Do you want to decline?
I do decline, because I would like Liz to be able to do it, just so everyone can say. I do decline because I would like Liz to be able to do it, just so everyone can say that I hate wellness.
Then it'd be Rebecca, Soko, and Elizabeth Spiny, and I apologize.
No, 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 no.
So we need a second. Oh, sorry.
I'm good. I'm gonna attend as I can.
Okay, okay. You're doing it next year then.
Fine, absolutely.
Woo, okay, did I have a second?
I, second.
Motion made and seconded. I'm sorry, Vita, we're gonna get to you next. So fun. Where do you fast forward?
Sorry to our secretary too, who's trying to transcribe all of this.
All you fifth graders at home watching, this is where you fast forward. They are. I know, I know, Liz. Alright, okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
I know you're watching.
Awesome. Great job. Okay, now we do have to be a little serious. We have negotiations coming up. Negotiations can be time consuming. Teachers are probably the most time consuming, paraprofessionals, and then usually the others kind of fall, fall through. And actually, we don't need secretary anymore. I'm gonna take them off. So we need two people on each. And this, this does also kind of require a flexible schedule, especially with, yeah. Because you have to kind of be able to get here in the afternoon, that's when they kind of like to do it. So just a heads up. We can try to work around. But, and we do, we do try to work on a reschedule, but I found that they were usually in the afternoon. So if you're somebody that you have a commute or, you know, like speak now and it's okay, we just want to know now. I'm happy to be on teachers. I've been on.
May I ask a logistical question? How much advance notice do you have of the meetings?
A lot.
Okay, perfect.
Yep, and we usually all agree, everybody takes out their calendar, we agree. You know, and you know what? We also get that this is volunteer and if something happens, that's why you're on a team.
Do you want to talk a bit about the, like, the time period that they have the meetings? Because sometimes it can stretch.
Yeah, there, well, it's.
Starting, I'm trying to remember when we started last time.
I'd like to try to start even earlier, as early as we can, I think, just to get.
So like when?
So like October.
October.
To hopefully just November, I'm gonna say.
But likely.
Also go on till.
So the last time I participated, we start, I can't remember when we started. We started in January and we finished in, what was it, August, September?
It depends on the contract.
So sometimes it can, and we weren't meeting all the time, but.
There's a lot of.
Once it hits the summer, some, it can stretch out.
A lot of time in between, because a lot of times you have to go back. They have to go meet with their lawyers, we meet with our lawyer. So it's not like once a week. It'll be like every other week or once a month. It varies. And really, it could just be super, it's gonna be super easy.
Be beautiful.
And we're gonna just have a couple meetings.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
And it also, try to coordinate with everyone, so it's not like the meeting's just announced right then.
We will try to partner you guys with somebody, like, we're not gonna put Rebecca and Leora on one together just because you've never done it. And we all have been through it fortunately, so just.
Okay, great.
Okay, but I did say I'd be happy to do teachers. I've done it the past two contracts, Amy and Liora.
I'd like to do teachers. It's the only unit I've not done.
Cool.
So I'd do that with you if you're willing.
I, of course.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
I nominate Laura Offen and Amy Marr for the Teacher Negotiation Subcommittee.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Any further discussion? Okay. Paras.
I'm gonna sit back and let other members pick.
Liz, you were on it last time.
Yeah.
I could do it again.
I, I mean, I could, I think it should be one of us, maybe, with some, someone else, maybe, or?
I will.
I don't know.
Yeah, I will step up to do paras, yep.
Alright, I would say Liz and Leora done, since I'm doing teachers.
Okay, I'm, I would accept that.
Are you, are you sure?
I am.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
I move to appoint Elizabeth Spiny and Leora Bram to the Paraprofessionals Negotiation Subcommittee.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Okay, great. Custodians. Amy, is that been you?
I have done that, yes.
Yep. I've never done custodians. I don't, I don't care. For me.
Do you want to do custodians again?
I can do custodians with whoever.
I can do custodians. I really want to do nurses. I'm just, I'm like, I want to do that, but I also am happy to do custodians.
Okay, too.
Great.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
I nominate Amy Marr and Rebecca Soko for the Custodian Negotiation Subcommittee.
Oh, second.
Alright, motion made and seconded. I don't even know if we really need to build on these, all those in favor? Okay, great. Nurses, Rebecca?
Yes, please.
Alright, I've been on nurses before. So I'm happy to do it again, that's, unless somebody else wants to.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
I nominate Rebecca Soko and Laura Offen for the Nurses Negotiation Subcommittee.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Alright, and our superintendent, who is more than subpar, I would like to say that. I have it written down. Rebecca and me.
Okay, thanks.
Speak up if you have a question.
Trying to do it subtly.
I know, but I'm happy, I think Amy and I did it last time. I'd love to stay on.
I'm happy to do it with you.
Is that alright?
Unless somebody else wants to.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I nominate Leora Bram and, oh, Laura Offen. I'm sorry, I was, I'm reading it, typing. It was like very confusing to me at this, for the Negotiation Subcommittee for Superintendent.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Alright, yay. And I didn't put the Law Subcommittee that we, because we just put that together.
We already have, yes.
Who said it again?
Um, Leora and Liz.
Yeah, we're meeting next week?
Yes.
Awesome. Well, thank you, everybody. I don't know why that was more difficult than it needs to be, but it was fun.
It was fun, it was difficult.
It wasn't difficult, it was fun. And I'm gonna skip Superintendent Report and ask for, I'm so sorry I made you sit through all that. But I'm so glad you're here and you asked such a great question of Kayden. Any end of the year reports for us?
Okay, so grades close next Monday. Parking passes and bus passes are available for those who need it. And the parking passes are due June twentieth and the bus passes are due June sixteenth. What else? Oh, if anyone wants to run for a class officer position, the form is due tomorrow. So, and then G-term starts next Wednesday, but other than that.
Hey, what are you doing?
I'm doing Freedom Trail.
Oh, nice.
Oh, fun.
Yeah, I'm so excited.
That's gonna be so fun. Did you go in fifth grade?
Fifth grade, no.
You didn't.
I don't know why I didn't go, no.
Did we not do it? No, we did it.
Oh, yeah.
Where did you go? Millbury Street?
Yeah, Millbury Street. No.
They don't do that.
They don't do it. Nor Street does it. Gotcha. Excellent. Kristy, are you chaperoning? Of course you do, that's amazing.
In no shoes, or?
Well, just be careful crossing the street.
Good luck.
Alright, and Vita, any, anything else you got?
I think that's it.
Alright, well, thank you. I want to thank you for your work this year. We're excited for next year and you're gonna be the senior.
Yeah.
So that's really great. And yeah, you can, you can go.
Have a good summer.
Have a great summer. Thank you so much.
Or you can stay. We're almost, we're almost done. We're almost through this. Woo, Superintendent Report.
Just real quick, we had Senior Night and Graduation, obviously, last week, big week for us. Senior Night was fantastic, real recognition of the senior class, and then Graduation. Couldn't have been better. The student speakers and performers did a wonderful job. I wanted to thank Donna Harris, Kevin Carney, J. Cody, Deb Goodwill, Diane Mowen, Kristen Gasper, for all of their work kind of behind the scenes, putting it all together. Bon Voyage took place that evening, the overnight. I wanted to thank the parent volunteers, the leadership of Aaron DeRazio in particular. They provided a safe and fun overnight experience for the kids and by all accounts, it was fantastic. And then tomorrow, we finish up MCAS finally. Ninth grade science at the high school. And I wanted to, for that, thank the tech department and Deb Goodwill. She has done, talk about behind the scenes, she has been just grinding and has done a wonderful job for kind of a thankless activity that's high pressure and stressful, and she did it beautifully. So thank you to Deb, and that's all I have.
Great. Okay, we have future agenda. So I know last week, I think we are gonna have to have a summer meeting for a couple of things. One, I'm hoping we'll have a law, a lawyer recommendation that we're gonna be able to make. We did have a request, this will, I guess, come up in correspondence, but I can talk about it now, to reopen that dress code policy. We had a couple of concerned teachers and they decided to meet with the Policy Subcommittee to share their concerns. So if we have updates, it's not a huge deal if we don't do it over the summer, we can certainly do it the first meeting of the year. I'm not, you know, but, so we might have an agenda, but I'm gonna keep it a little loose right now and wait probably for Leora and Liz to, if they have timing. And then I'll send out and we can do the best we can. If it's just three of us, then it'll be, just be three of us. Like, we're not gonna make huge policy changes over the summer.
So what are you thinking in terms of a date?
I wasn't really. What, I guess my question to you is, you haven't met yet, right? Which is fine.
No, we're meeting next week.
Do you think it's gonna be a lengthy process? Or you don't know yet? Is that not a fair question to ask?
I don't think we know yet.
Okay. So I don't want to do the twentieth, obviously, because it's the last day of school and that's bonkers if we think we're bonkers tonight. We could certainly, I'd have to check vacation with Jay. Whenever.
Whatever.
We're not gonna do the fourth, obviously.
I think not.
I mean, I won't be here. I won't be here the eleventh, so the soonest we would probably meet is July eighteenth or the twenty-fifth.
I won't be here.
You're out the eighteen.
I'm out the eighteen, but I could do the twenty-fifth.
Well, that's the right, twenty-fifth, are you here?
Yes.
Are you here?
Sure.
Are you? No idea.
Past tomorrow.
I think that means I was going to do something.
No, no.
Tentatively say the twenty-fifth, I'm not meeting without Jay, because do you think things? I've done that before. It's not my favorite and Kristen won't be here.
That'll work.
And we'll need to check that we can get the room? Is there?
Yeah, so we will do the behind the scenes work and I'll let you know, but how about a tentative Christmas in July? Or a holiday in July.
Meeting with Santa? Is that what you mean?
Exactly what I meant.
Did the room just get colder or is it me?
Maybe we'll serve pancakes.
Excellent.
Okay. Alright, and then we're.
She said potato pancakes.
Okay, we have a lot of meetings. We have a lot of meetings to go through, a lot of meeting minutes. Thank you, Liz, for pulling all these together and making sure that we stayed on track and organized. I really appreciate that. And I probably will need that this year as well, a little bit of a nudge would be great. We have our Student Advisory Council meeting minutes. So I think we can probably just.
Do you want to group those?
I would love to, yeah, just because, yes.
I move that the school committee accept the Student Advisory Council meeting minutes from May twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two, March twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two, December fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two, April eleventh, twenty-twenty-three, and February seventh, twenty-twenty-three.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Awesome, great. Thanks again, Liz, really appreciate it.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move that the school committee accept and approve the School Committee meeting minutes of the special meeting with the Finance Committee of April eleventh, twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
I just wanted to explain this, this.
Yes.
These minutes are non-minutes because we didn't have a quorum and we didn't have a meeting, but we have to post that anyway.
Yep, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Look at us being so efficient.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move that the school committee accept and approve the School Committee meeting minutes from May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Okay, that's it, right?
Yes.
Okay, and then we have a couple of warrants on the docket. Docket, I think is the right word to say. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move that the school committee approve warrant forty-seven in the amount of four hundred and forty-two thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and eighty-two cents.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Alright, motion carries, five zero. Alright, we have one more?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move that the school committee accept and approve warrant forty-seven R. in the amount of eight hundred and fourteen dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? You don't have discussion, right?
No, no discussion.
Hearing none, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries. They all raised their hand for a discussion.
I was waiting, I thought you had something to say.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I saw you raise your hand and I automatically.
Woo, we're almost through. Policy, we don't have any, thankfully.
No update.
No update. Member reports.
We all went to graduation.
Graduation, anything else?
I attended the Bon Voyage event. It was great. All the kids were great. I was very tired. Looking forward to not having to stay up all night next year as the senior parents take over for us junior parents. So, but it was, it was, it was a great event and if anybody has any feedback for next year, so I'll be helping to plan it next year, reach out.
I also went, not as a school committee member, but as a mom, but I do want to say that I was so impressed with those kids. They were great. Like, I'm sure there were things that happened that I don't know about, but the kids that I was with, I thought were phenomenal. And I don't like to stay up late, but it was like, I went home and I was so happy. I had been dreading this. And I volunteered, kind of like Kristy, I volunteered for everything since before my kid was in kindergarten. And I thought, is this really it? This is kind of the big one, I'm dreading it, and it was amazing. So great job to the people that really, I didn't run it or organize it, I just showed up for a few hours in the middle of the night, but it was great. Do we have any other member updates? Tonight is our last meeting with Mrs. Gasper. I didn't, I don't know what to say, Kristen, at least from my heart. I want to just thank you for all the twelve years you've been here. You were Jay's, I think, first hire when he got here. You've been phenomenal in everything I've ever seen you do, from being the middle school principal all the way up to assistant superintendent. You've made your mark in Grafton and we are better off for having you. Shrewsbury is very lucky and I'm gonna miss you so much. So stay in touch and keep doing good work for the kids in Massachusetts because they're better off because you're an educator. Thank you. I don't know. I just spoke.
I don't think I could say it better than that.
I think we all feel the same. Every, so we just got you a little something from us and, you know, we'll take good care of them.
Thank you. I want to thank the committee too for all the support and Jay, for all of his support and guidance. Fourteen years that I've worked either for with Jay, so.
What people may not know is they work together, because I just said twelve years.
Yes, twelve years.
They worked together in Shrewsbury before Jay was hired and then he brought her along. And it was probably one, I won't say the, because there's been a lot of good ones, but one of his better hires over the years. So it says a lot when you can, I think, when you go on to the next thing, it always says a lot about your boss and mentor, I think, that you're able to go and you're gonna do great things, so we will miss you. I will miss you.
Thank you. And I also want to thank the committee, the parents, families, staff, teachers. It's just, it's been great. So, thank you.
The only correspondence I mentioned, we did get a letter from some GMS teachers just concerned about hats and hoods in the policy